Order the City Council meeting for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 8th, 2021. In just a moment, you will see the American flag, and when the flag comes up, if you would please rise as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Hi Stephen, sorry about that, can you try again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members? Ms. Hoppy.
Present.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Present.
Ms. Halteen.
Present.
Ms. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Stites.
Present.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
And Ms. Nosler Beck.
President.
Mr. Mayor, we have a full house. Thank you very much, thank you all for joining us. We have one proclamation this evening, which is to proclaim Black History Month in February of 2021, and I would like to invite Kia Ruiz from the Wheat Ridge for Equity to join us on the screen, and she's here now, and Miles Dolan, who is with the Wheat Ridge Parks Department. Miles, thank you for joining us.
Of course.
This is a proclamation, as I said, for Black History Month, February 2021. Whereas February's Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by Black Americans, recognition of their central role in U.S. history, and a time to reflect on the continued struggle for racial justice. And whereas experts say that Black history and learning more about systemic racism is essential as our country faces backlash to civil rights activism such as protests following the death of George Floyd. And whereas Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of Black history, developed Black History Month. Woodson, whose parents were enslaved, was an author, historian, and the second Black American to earn a PhD at Harvard University. And whereas Woodson chose February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass, a famed abolitionist who escaped from slavery, and President Abraham Lincoln, who formally abolished slavery. And whereas the Wheat Ridge City Council passed a resolution in 2020 condemning racism, which confirmed, quote, "Racism and hate have no place in our city, and there is much work to be done to stop pervasive, longstanding, and devastating racial injustice in our community," close quote. And whereas the Wheat Ridge City Council and city staff participated in equity and bias training in 2020 and 2021, and created a Race and Equity Task Force, task force consisting of diverse and multiple perspectives to review city policies, services, ordinance, and community system, to identify policies and practices that contribute to discrimination. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge recognizes the importance of Black History Month and our ongoing commitment to continuous improvement and self-reflection in order to become a more inclusive and responsive community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado formally designate the month of February 2021 as Black History Month. Witness thereof on this eighth day of February 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. And I would like to invite Kia. Kia, would you like to say a few words in accepting this proclamation?
I would. Thank you on behalf of Wheat Ridge for Equity, Mayor Starker, and Wheat Ridge City Council. From what I understand, this is the first year that the Wheat Ridge City Council has recognized Black History Month and as an acknowledgement, like I said, for Wheat Ridge for Equity and for the diversity inclusive committee at my kid's school in Wheat Ridge at Mountain Phoenix. Yeah, it's the Black history that America's reckoning with right now goes beyond George Floyd's murder last year. And I just ask, like with all the work that you're doing, including the monumental effort of the task force that's going to be announced tonight, it's more than just Black history, it's also looking at what we look at as a commonality of really white history and that dominant paradigm of Emmett Till's murder, of the foundation of this country, the foundation of policing, the foundation of a lot of these systems that we're still facing now, that seem to culminate in this flashpoint for America with George Floyd's murder. It goes back 400 years, and yeah, thank you so much for your efforts in recognizing this and for the work I know that you're sincerely putting forward. Thank you, Mayor Starker.
Thank you very much, Kia, for joining us tonight. And Miles, we appreciate you being with us tonight and all the work that you do with our Parks Department, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Get back to my agenda here. We are at approval of the minutes without exception, or do the minutes stand approved? Seeing no exceptions, we will approve the minutes. And this was the minutes, let me make a notion to that. The City Council meeting meets at January 25th, 2021. Those were the minutes that I were referring that are in your packet. If there are no corrections to those, we'll let those stand as presented. We will go to the approval of the agenda, are there any corrections on the agenda? And we will let the agenda stand as presented. We will now move into our citizens' right to speak. A citizen may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under citizens' right to speak. We will do this on the Zoom format in our, by raising your hand in our Zoom format in the virtual program that we're at, or by, if you're on the telephone, you may, at the appropriate time, mute your telephone and join, we will bring you into the meeting. So I will ask now if you would like to speak on any item not on the agenda. You may do so by raising your hand in the virtual, in the, click on the participant screen, and you will see at the bottom right a raise your hand function, and I will go to Ms. Scheck to see if anyone has raised their hand and would like to speak to us tonight.
Yes, Mayor, joining us on screen will be Rebecca Radaba, and I'm positive I'm not getting her name pronounced correctly, and Rebecca is our homeless navigator, and she's pretty.
Rebecca, welcome to Citizens' Right to Speak. If you would please give us your first name and last name, and spell your last name and give us your address, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Radaba, and I am the new homeless navigator for the City of Wheat Ridge, Golden and Edgewater. I wanted to briefly speak tonight to introduce myself to City Council and to the Wheat Ridge community, and to kind of provide a little bit more information about my role, a little bit about my background. I have some extensive experience working in the social work field and with individuals experiencing homelessness. More recently, I worked as a case manager for Urban Peak, which is a nonprofit in Denver that assists individuals with experience, who are experiencing homelessness and with meeting their goals and becoming self-sufficient. I have experience using strengths-based case management and trauma-informed care, and also mental health first date certified. As the homeless navigator for Wheat Ridge, Golden and Edgewater, my primary role is to navigate persons experiencing a housing crisis and to stable housing and help them obtain the services and resources needed to obtain and maintain that housing. My role is kind of brought on as a new countywide navigation model that launched in January 2020. So this model is comprised of six municipal and county-based housing navigators in Jefferson County who work directly with persons experiencing homelessness or at imminent risk of homelessness. While I don't add to the number of housing resources available, I will directly help persons experiencing homelessness to identify solutions to complex health and housing challenges and support those persons seeking a pathway out of homelessness. I'll also be working closely with local and with local businesses in the community, constituents, metro area nonprofit providers, as well as government agencies. For example, I've been working with the Wheat Ridge Police Department and the court system to kind of streamline a referral process to the homeless navigator. If you're interested, you can find more information about homelessness and some resources that are offered within our community on the city's website. And I encourage anyone with any questions or concerns related to homelessness to contact me directly at my email, which is homelessnavigator, all one word, at ci.wheatridge.co.us. And as this program progresses throughout the year, and we're developing more changes, I will be coming back for program updates. For now, I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
Well Rebecca, thank you very much. It's great to hear about your program and your part in that, and we appreciate the work that you do in our community, and we look forward to having updates on how your progress is going, so thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Scheck, do we have additional speakers wishing to speak at tonight's meeting?
We do, next up is David.
Okay, David, if you'd please give us your first name and last name, and spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak this evening, my name is David Bondarchuk, my address in Wheat Ridge is 6440 West 31st Avenue. I am joining the meeting today to discuss some issues that I've been having with city permits and the city building department. I recently had some windows installed in my home, and a permit was pulled by my contractor for that. Prior to today's meeting, I submitted a scan of documents and a detailed letter of my account of my issues with the building and city permits. You should all have that in front of you with three minutes to speak, I'm not really able to dive 100% into this, but part of my problems are when you were making appointments for the inspectors to come to the homes, they're not giving anything other than a date, there's no time window, we're sitting at a property all day long waiting for someone to come, and sometimes they don't even show up. It is my understanding that the building and permits department is in place not just to accept payments for the municipality, but in fact, their duty is to follow strict protocols and allow for proper procedure in place for everyone to determine the overall public safety of a completed job by a contractor or business. This is my understand, it is my understanding that it helps hold people accountable for changes to homes and buildings within the city limit that could later affect the outcomes of future litigation, insurance claims, and quite possibly affect real estate values of the community as a whole depending on the scope of the job. They offer these city permits to ensure everyone is essentially abiding by the same rules connected to city law and by following the current rules and regulations in place. Then the city issues permits and changes, charges a fee for later follow-up of a city inspector to ensure things are done in accordance with the law. This process helps protect the city and the residents equally. Again, this is my understanding of how the whole process works and how, why it's in place. I was lied to by a city inspector, I was told that there was no appointment for January 20th, and when I confronted my contractor whom I had a year of issues with due to COVID and this and that, the other thing, it turns out that they had a receipt that they were indeed supposed to show up, and then they did not. So I was lied to by the city. While I understand the importance of safety and security during a pandemic, it is my experience that the current Wheat Ridge City Permits Department is failing the city of Wheat Ridge, and more importantly, its residents. I believe if you are unable to check the full job, then in my opinion, at the time, the permit appointment should be rescheduled for perhaps maybe even after the pandemic to sign off all open permits where it can be done correctly and not just verifying half of the job. Once the city inspector finally showed up at my property, he only inspected the outside of the property and not the inside of the job. Secondly, if we're going to use COVID as an excuse not to answer the phones initially, then yes.
Your time has expired, could you please complete your comments?
Well, as I said, I had submitted a full letter to the city council, and there is truly some failures happening, and I believe the people on the department and permits department need to be held accountable.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, and I know that they were heard by the city staff, and we appreciate you coming tonight to speak with us about that. Ms. Scheck, are there additional callers on the line that would like to speak under citizens' right to speak?
Mayor, I don't see any other hands up.
Okay, I'll ask one more time, if you would like to speak under citizens' right to speak on any item not on the agenda, you may raise your hand in the Zoom format located at the participants icon at the bottom of your screen, and we will be happy to bring you in. If you're on the telephone, please unmute yourself, ask to speak, and we'll bring you into the meeting. Are there any further hands raised, Ms. Scheck?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then we will close our citizens' right to speak, and I want to thank all those who came and participated with us tonight. Okay, we will now go to our regular agenda items. Item number one is our consent agenda item. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda item 1A, Resolution Number 05-2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the reappropriation and reincumbrence of the 2020 fiscal year encumbered funds in the amount of $5,444,307.38. Consent agenda item 1B, Resolution Number 06-2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2020 capital improvement program budget to reflect the approval of a reduction in appropriation in the amount of $1,717,858. Goodness, swear I can read. Consent agenda item 1C, motion to amend and extend the contract for professional services to ACOM Technical Services Incorporated, Greenwood Village, Colorado, for the period of January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $1,117,340, and approve payments for ongoing program management services for the Investing for the Future program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dozeman. May I have a motion to approve the agenda items number 1A, 1B, and 1C?
I move to approve consent agenda items 1A, 1B, and 1C.
If you would like to second this item, would you please raise your hand? Mr. Urban. This is our consent agenda item. All those in favor of the consent, the, in favor of this motion, would you please signify by raising your hand, and would the clerk please poll the council? Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you. We will go to agenda item number two. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 01-2021, an ordinance concerning use taxes and in connection therewith amending subsection 22-67 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to provide a building materials' use tax exemption for public housing authorities. Would you like me to get more in-depth on this?
Yes, why don't you read what's at issue, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, at issue is that section 22-68 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, which covers building materials and supplies, requires that every person who builds, constructs, reconstructs any building, dwelling, or other structure in the city shall pay a use tax. Section 22-67 of the code exempts public schools, Wheat Ridge, the, exempts public school, Wheat Ridge Housing Authority and Renewal Wheat Ridge Projects from the city's use tax. This ordinance will amend subsection 22-67 of the code to provide the same exemption for public housing authorities.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a further staff report on this item?
Jeff Wilson is here, special counsel with our city attorney's office, not sure if he has much to add, but I'll let him speak.
Well, Mr. Wilson, thank you very much, glad you can join us again tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to be here. I think that was a good summary that Ms. Weaver gave just now, just to add that this will also resolve a refund matter with the Foothills Housing Authority.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I would like to announce that this is an ordinance on second reading, it is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing. And so thank you very much, Mr. Wilson, for that introduction to this item. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to the public to speak on this issue. If you would like, or a member of the public would like to speak on agenda item number two, now is your opportunity. If you would raise your hand in the Zoom format, we will bring you into the meeting. Ms. Scheck, do we see anyone with their hands raised that would like to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, if you would like to speak on this item, raise your hand in Zoom format. If you're on the telephone, unmute yourself and ask to be recognized, and we'll bring you into the meeting. No takers? Okay, we'll close our public comment on this item and open it up to questions from council. Are there any questions on this item? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, and I see that Chris Miller is on as well, so I just wanted to see if we got that little, like, line item kind of fixed where they had asked for the repayment of, I believe, the interest on that, and so I just wanted to double-check that we got that taken care of and out of the agreement.
Mr. Miller?
I was going to ask Jeff if he can opine on that with respect to, I believe the woman from the housing authority said that they would waive any interest that was due to the city.
That's right. That was their, that was their commitment, they make no claim for the interest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on this item? Okay, Ms. Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
Maybe from. Weaver's going to make a motion, if that's okay.
Maybe I'll go to Ms. Weaver.
Sorry, Leah. I move to approve Council Bill Number 01-2021, an ordinance concerning use taxes, and in connection therewith amending subsection 22-67 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to provide a building materials' use tax exemption for public housing authorities on second reading and that it take effect on adoption.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand, would the clerk please poll the council? Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number three. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 07-2021, a resolution approving a major subdivision plat on property zone mixed-use commercial, MU-C, and located at 7661 West 41st Avenue, case number WS-19-06, Sweet Ridge subdivision.
Thank you, this is a public hearing on a resolution, it is quasi-judicial, I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this, you, it will be assumed that you will speak the truth as you understand it in this matter. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our planner in the Community Development Department, Zareen Tasneem, is here this evening.
Okay, Ms. Tasneem, continue.
Hi, everyone, I'm going to play my presentation now. Hello, my name is Zareen Tasneem, and I am a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge's Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WS-1906, which is a request for approval of a six-lot subdivision for townhomes on site-zoned mixed-use commercial and located at 7661 West 41st Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record, the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. The property is located on the north side of West 41st Avenue between Wadsworth Boulevard and Yarrow Court. The Wilmore Davis Elementary School is located about a block west, and the Yarrow Gardens Townhome Development, currently actively under construction, is located further to the northwest. Although the aerial shows the former single-family house on the site, it has since been demolished. In 2019, the subject property underwent an administrative site plan review and was approved for a six-unit townhome-style apartment development. Building permit applications for the development were submitted shortly after the site plan approval. Construction took place in 2020, and certificate of occupancy was issued in January 2021. The owner originally intended to own the entire property and rent the units, however, they subsequently decided to sell some of the units, which can only be achieved through plating. The property is zoned MUC, a zone district generally located along major commercial corridors such as Wadsworth, and encourages medium-to-high-density mixed-use development. Townhomes are permitted use in MUC. This site is in an urban renewal area and was part of the comprehensive city-initiated rezoning of parcels adjacent to Wadsworth and within urban renewal areas in 2011. For this reason, parcels to the Midwest, East, Southeast, and North are also zoned MUC. They contain commercial and residential uses. To the Southwest and further west and northwest are properties zoned residential 2, R2, and primarily consist of single-family residential homes. A subdivision plat is a technical document that removes, creates, or defines property lines, allows the city to evaluate adjacent right-of-way, and allows the city to evaluate civil documents such as traffic and drainage. As a reminder, a subdivision plat does not affect the zoning or permitted uses on the property. It enables development already permitted by the zoning. Because the plat creates six lots, it is classified as a major subdivision, and planning commission will make a recommendation to City Council, who is the approving body. With that, we'll look at the plat, in this case, three pages. This is the first sheet on the plat, which contains standard notes and declarations and signature blocks. This is the second sheet, which has the graphic portion. North is to the left. This sheet establishes new lot lines, tracks, and right-of-way dedication. It also shows existing easements that were recorded by separate documents. The third sheet of the plat is also a graphic depiction, this one establishing new easements. Next, we'll zoom in and take a closer look on some of the sheets. This is the second sheet zoomed in, again, north is to the left. As you saw in the aerial, the site currently functions as one parcel. As you saw in the aerial, the site currently functions as one parcel, outlined here in orange. The total area of the subject site is about a quarter acre. Highlighted in blue are the existing easements benefiting the Wheat Ridge Water District. Outlined in purple are the six proposed townhome lots. The MUC Zone District does not include minimum lot size and lot width requirements. When a new development occurs or when new lots are created through the subdivision process, staff reviews adjacent street improvements to confirm that they meet our current roadway standards. In this case, this was assessed at the time of site plan review and a five-foot attached sidewalk has already been constructed. This plat does, however, include a one-foot right-of-way dedication to accommodate the city's standard two-foot utility zone behind the sidewalk. The right-of-way dedication is highlighted in red. Outline here in green, this plat also establishes four non-buildable tracks to be maintained by the Homeowners Association, or HOA, to be established for the site. Track A and B encompass the residence's open space amenities. Track C encompasses the shared pedestrian walkway that provides access to the front of each of the units. Track D, which encompasses the drive aisle, also provides access to the unit's garages from West Forty-first Avenue, as well as the trash enclosure, bike parking area, and new hydrant. This is the third sheet zoomed in, showing the new easements. The yellow represents easement areas for utilities and access. The gray represents a stormwater drainage easement for the storm scepter manhole installed to handle water quality for most of the runoff caused by the added imperviousness. A drainage letter and plan were reviewed for the entire site as part of the site plan review and drainage certifications have already been received by the Engineering Division, which confirmed the drainage facilities were constructed as designed. As part of the site plan and subdivision review process, the application was sent on a roll to outside agencies and other city departments. All utility agencies can serve the property and the developer will need to work with those entities to install any additional necessary infrastructure. The Engineering Division has approved the plat. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days and letters were sent to property owners within a six-hundred-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge Speaks will be reviewed by City Council and entered into the public record. At its hearing on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, Planning Commission recommended approval of the subdivision. Staff has concluded that all agencies can serve the property and all requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. Therefore, we are recommending approval with one condition. The developer shall record documentation establishing an HOA concurrently with the plat recognition. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tasneem. Uh, before we go to questions from counsel, I would like to uh, open this up for questions from the public or comments from the public. If you are a member of the public and would like to comment on this agenda item number three, now is your opportunity. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, we will bring you into the meeting.
Ms., Mr. Mayor, I think before we do that, this is Ken, uh, that we, we do also have an applicant presentation.
I'm sorry, please forgive me. Uh, yes.
My, my apologies.
Certainly go to the applicant.
I just wanted to also add that we did not receive any other, or com- sorry, we did not receive any comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks related to this case, nor through any other means to staff members. I will now play the applicant presentation and the applicant is here tonight to take questions afterwards.
Hello, everyone.
I'm not getting any audio if I should be. Okay, oh, here we go.
Hello, everyone. My name is Frank Sepharati. I'm with FJ Progressive Builders. We are a small, local Denver and Wheat Ridge general construction company and development company. I am offering this presentation to you guys tonight in regards to subdividing the plat for a six-plex located behind me at seven-six-six-one West Forty-first. As you can see, the project is nearly complete and we will be getting our CO hopefully on Friday or Monday. In two thousand and nineteen, we purchased an old dilapidated single-family home and recently have just finished developing this six-plex. Highly quality construction and very aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors and surrounding community. In our original planning, we wanted to maintain ownership of all six units and manage the property as rentals. However, with current financial burdens, we may be able to only retain two units and sell off the remaining four. We have formed an HOA and are in the process, like I said, of obtaining the COs. These units offer high-end finishes at an affordable price. They will make great homes for families of all ages, including first-time home buyers. We strongly feel that this building and home model will attract more families to a growing area in Wheat Ridge. Being right off of Forty-first and Wadsworth, we feel that these homes fall in line with the Wheat Ridge Master Plan and Wadsworth Expansion Project, being that the stoplight will be moving to that stop sign right down there here shortly. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity to give the presentation. We look forward to doing many more projects together in the near future and I am here for any questions if you might have them. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Ms. Tasneem or Mr. Goff, do you have any further staff presentation on this item?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Now we will, uh, open this up to questions from the public, comments from the public. If you would like to speak on this agenda item number three, now is your opportunity. Please, uh, uh, raise your hand in the Zoom format and we'll bring you into the meeting. Ms. Shek, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we are going to close the public comment on this item and I will open it up to questions from counsel. Uh, Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I noticed in the packet, um, some of the biggest concerns were the traffic, um, and specifically on-street parking in that area. And I'm very well aware of the restrictions, just because my doctor's office is right there. And so I take Forty-first to my doctor, um, my doctor's office a lot. And like, as, as far as I can tell, there shouldn't be any on-street parking on Forty-first, correct?
There is not any parking there. The property owner has worked out a deal, I believe, with their neighbor to do a shared parking agreement for any visitor parking.
Okay, and so would we need any signage to go up, um, on that curb, um, or that sidewalk to, to just kind of indicate that there's no parking allowed?
I believe that would be something to be worked out with the Public Works Department.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dozeman, I did, I did forward on those comments that we received, um, to the police department, um, to make them aware of, of the concerns about traffic in this area and parking. So, um, we, we've dealt with this area in the past. I think you might remember with some parking issues. So I'll make sure Public Works is, is aware of this project and, and we'll make sure it's signed properly.
Okay, yeah, because I, I know, um, when Yarrow went up, um, we hadn't placed any signs about no-on-street parking right there and it, you know, it's kind of a blind curve. And so, um, we had had some issues and I'd rather that signage go up and, and set a precedent as opposed to being, you know, an afterthought. Thank you.
I also just wanted to add that that commenter was referred to our neighborhood traffic management program, which is administered by our Engineering Division. So they were made aware of some options that are available through the city since it is a more wider issue in the area as opposed to specific to this development.
Thank you. Additional questions from counsel or comments? Before I close the hearing, uh, the public hearing, is there any more questions that you wish to ask staff on this item? I'm going to close the public hearing and Mr. Urban, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution zero-seven dash twenty-twenty-one, a resolution approving a major subdivision plat on, plat on property zone mixed-use commercial MUC and located at seventy-six sixty-one West Forty-first Avenue for the following reasons. City Council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by section twenty-six dash one oh-nine and twenty-six dash four oh-seven of the Code of Laws. The request is, subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. All agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. The requirement of Article Four subdivision regulations of the zoning and development code have been met and with the following condition, the developer shall record documentation establishing a homeowners association for the site concurrently with the recordation of the subdivision plat.
If you'd like to second this, please raise your hand. Uh, Ms. Hulteen? Um, do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand and will the clerk please, uh, record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Um, we will now go to agenda item number four. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce this item? Mr. Uh-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item number four, ordinance for first reading, Council Bill number zero-two dash two-zero-two-one, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to adopt a new Article fourteen and Chapter eleven entitled Short-Term Rental Licenses and in connection therewith making conforming amendments in chapters twenty-two and twenty-six.
Uh, would you please want to read what's at issue?
The City of Wheat Ridge does not currently define or regulate short-term rentals, STRs, in the Code of Laws. Short-term rentals are dwelling units or portions of dwelling units that are used for lodging accommodations for transit occupancy for a period of less than thirty consecutive days. STRs have existed in one form or fashion for decades but have become much more prevalent as land-use phenomenon in the last ten years. They are commonly listed on web-based platforms including Airbnb, VRBO, and Expedia. The purpose of this ordinance is to fi- is to define STRs, allow, license, and regulate them.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing. Um, Ms. Hoppy, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number zero-two dash two-zero-two-one, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to adopt a new Article fourteen and Chapter eleven entitled Short-Term Rental Licenses and in connection therewith making conforming amendments in chapters twenty-two and twenty-six. On first reading, order published, a public hearing set for Monday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM as a virtual meeting and that it may take effect on May first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second. You would like to second this, please raise your hand. And Ms. Hutchinson, got the second on that? And, um, if you are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Will the clerk re- please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number five. Um, Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Council Bill number zero-three twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance sixteen ninety-seven, series twenty-twenty, concerning regulation of noise. And at issue, the current Code of Laws, section sixteen dash one oh-three, that C, noi- no- noise ordinance, will apply to industrial operations as of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. The Rocky Mountain Bottle Company, which would be regulated by the ordinance, has developed a sound mitigation wall for its operation, which will not be completed before mid-two thousand and twenty-one. This ordinance extends the effective date for the industrial noise standards until October one, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Uh, Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please provide a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill number zero-through-three dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance sixteen ninety-seven, series twenty-twenty, concerning regulation of noise on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for seven PM, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, as a virtual hearing. And if approved, it take effect upon adoption as permitted by section five point one-one of the Charter.
Thank you. If you would like to second this, please raise your hand. Uh, Mr. Stites? Um, uh, this is an ordinance on first reading. Uh, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed eight to nothing.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will now go to agenda item number six. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce motion to approve appointment of representatives to the Race and Equity Task Force. At issue, City Council directed staff to initiate an application process for the creation of a Race and Equity Task Force. Twenty-three applications were received between November second, two thousand and twenty, and January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The mayor and council members from each council district have selected their recommended task force representatives through a blind review process. Action is now required to appoint these members to the task force.
Thank you. I will go to, um, Ms. Hoppy, would you please make the, uh, the motion, the introduction and the motions for District One?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My privilege to make the motion to appoint Shannon Kieschel, Elise Saint Peter, Jenny Snell, and Julia Evans to the Race and Equity Task Force for District One.
We have a second? A second by Ms. Hutchinson? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and will the clerk please record the votes?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Urban, would you please make a motion to, uh, for the recommendations for District Two, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Alexander Goldsmith, Deborah Boyd, Andres Martinez, Renee Kleck for District Two.
Thank you. And, uh, is there a second? Uh, Ms. Hulteen, second stat? Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please, uh, record the votes?
Once again, passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, for District Three, Ms. Weaver, would you please, uh, provide a, uh, motion on the recommendations for, uh, that, uh, district?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I will. For District Three, we have Diana Lopez, Becky Wells Cabor, Sahar, Marcingham, and Millie Nadler.
Thank you. And, uh, do we have a second by Mr. Stites? Thank you very much, Mr. Stites. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and will the clerk please, uh, record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dozeman, would you please make a motion to introduce the, uh, recommendations for District Four?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Tabitha Cardinal, Alvina Vasquez, Terry Gale, and Allison Brown to the Race and Equity Task Force for District Four.
Thank you. And do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Nosler Beck. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the appointments have been approved unanimously.
Thank you. The mayor had, uh, had a four item, four persons to recommend at-large in the city and, uh, I would like to recommend Jeff Richards, Jeremy Make, Kelly Easton, and Anisa Valdez. Um, Ms. Um, Nos- or Ms. Hoppy, would you please, uh, make a motion to, um, uh, to appoint these people to the Race and Equity Task Force?
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Jeff Richards, Jeremy Make, Kelly Easton, and Anisa Val- Val- Valdez for the at-large positions to the Race and Equity Task Force.
And is there a second? Uh, second by Ms. Hulteen? Um, would, uh, all those in favor of the motion, please, uh, signify by raising your- Um, would uh, all those in favor of the motion, please uh, signify by raising your hand. And would the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the appointments have been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much. And I would like to thank all of the uh, all of the citizens and uh, of Wheat Ridge who uh, made submission to uh, to sit on this task force. And the congratulations to the um, to the residents and uh, and others. We have a couple of non-residents also who were who were appointed to the, to the Wheat uh, Equity Task Force. And I want to thank you for your service. Uh, this has been a great, you know, a lot of progress that we're making as a city to try to uh, to reach a greater uh, greater equality in our community. And we look forward to your work in our community and uh, terrific recommendations coming out of it. So, thank you very much. And uh, that should conclude Item Number Six. And that's all of the items on our regular agenda. So, let me get back here. And we will go to um, City Managers Matters, Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, a couple of quick things. Um, we are off next Monday for uh, celebration of President's Day, so. Um, enjoy your long weekend, but uh, we'll, we'll see you the following Saturday on uh, February twentieth for our council retreat. Um, staff is working on um, a binder of information that will get out to you soon with the agenda. And some other background information, backup information, so um, look for that soon. Um, and then also my uh, condolences go out to the Servini family. Um, I think you've all heard Carl Servini. Um, former, or uh, husband of former mayor Gretchen Servini passed away on January twenty-seventh. Um, his um, they're gonna have a virtual celebration of life on uh, February twenty-sixth. Um, there is information on the in, in memoriam website. Um, you can find that information, but Carl was a, was a, a great man, um, did a lot for our community, um, lived a long, um, great life and um, was in- instrumental in starting the Wheat Ridge Optimist Club in Wheat Ridge and, which is um, one of the largest clubs in the, in the area, so. He'll be missed. Um, and um, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Goff. Uh, City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. Nothing uh, tonight.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Elected Officials Matters. And uh, let's start with our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick thing. The population that is most at risk of not being able to get a vaccine appointment right now. Are the elderly who have no smart devices, no computers, and they need help to get it. There are a number of organizations working on that problem. However, those of you in the community. Who know of a senior or a person who has a disability. Who cannot, for one reason or another, then for themselves online to make an appointment. Uh, we know who they are. We live near them. We're their neighbors and friends. And I would urge people to seek those individuals out and help them register for vaccine appointments. It is particularly important, of course, that we vaccinate everyone over the age of sixty-five. And it requires some savvy and some effort online to get an appointment. So, if anyone out there is listening. Who knows of a senior or someone else who uh, is unable or has no um, high-tech savvy, please seek them out and help them register. And that would, that will be uh, a very important step to help those folks along. More help is coming. In the immediate future, however, we're going to help these people one at a time throughout the community, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Clerk Kirkpatrick. Uh, we'll go to our Treasurer, Mr. Miller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have no uh, updates tonight, but I would like to echo the sentiments of uh, City Clerk Kirkpatrick. Um, please reach out, uh, see your neighbors. Um, now's a great time to give someone a call, knock on the door, say hello, be neighborly. Um, we've got some cold weather moving in at the end of the week and it could, we could get some snow. Um, maybe one of your neighbors needs some help clearing their walk or their um, sidewalks of the snow. Um, keep in mind that not everybody is as able as many of us are. Um, so uh, encourage everyone to continue to be neighborly. Um, and also, it's gonna be very cold the next several nights. Please, uh, anybody out there, reminder to uh, bring in your pets from outside.
Uh, thank you, Treasurer Miller. Um, Council Member Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. And I just wanted to um, thank everyone um, for getting this Equity Task Force um, in place and over the finish line. Um, this was a real community effort um, that took a lot of courage um, to get us here. And um, I want to make sure that we're remembering where this all started. Um, I'd like to recognize some of those folks from Wheat Ridge for Equity and other members of our community that came and spoke. Had the courage to talk about why this was so important to do. Um, and during, geez, what month was that? Was it back in August or September? Um, we, we came together, we asked the tough questions. We've been through some really tough conversations and implicit bias training. Um, and we're, we're kind of following the community's lead on this one. And um, I'm so grateful to um, all of those that decided to apply and take a chance on this task force. Cause who knows what we're gonna be able to accomplish here. Um, and you know, we might not get it right on the first iteration, but let's keep, let's keep going at it. Um, because this is the kind of, kind of work that um, we should probably just dedicate our whole life to. So, thank you so much. Um, it's such an honor to be on this council with all of you. Um, and for all of you for taking this courageous step. Um, but I really want to thank our incredible community. Um, so hey, Valentine's Day is coming up. Wheat Ridge, I love you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Member Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I also wanted to echo the thanks of our citizens for applying for the Race and Equity Task Force. And we're also um, going to be appointing to boards and commissions and um, you know, it's been a little bit more of a struggle this year, I think, finding people to, to be engaged. Um, via, you know, Zoom and, and virtually as opposed to being in person. Um, and I, I really wanted to thank staff. Uh, you guys have done a phenomenal job during all of this. Um, you know, I text Patrick uh, the, the day after a really big storm and I told him, you know, like our Public Works Department is second to none. You know, I'm really just proud of how on top of the, our city staff has been. Um, and how engaged and involved our residents have continued to be throughout all of this time. You know, I'm still receiving calls and emails and I'm, I'm still touching base and meeting with residents here and there. And so I just you, you know, I, I finally feel like we're coming out on the other side of the pandemic. You know, we're rolling out vaccines. I'm, I'm seeing the hospital um, line with people waiting to get vaccines and, and I'm just really grateful that we're, I hope, coming to a con- to a conclusion of this time. And, and I, I just have seen so much resilience. Um, and innovation and adaptation by our business community, our residents, our city staff. And I'm just, I'm really proud of where, of what we have done and been able to accomplish, um, given the circumstances. So, thank you to all of you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Council Member Stites.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to start with my condolences to Gretchen Servini's uh, family. Carl was a a very great guy and um, got to know that family pretty well over the last couple of years and really enjoyed that. Um, Amanda, Ms. Weaver and I had the uh, privilege to have the uh, District Three meeting on Saturday at the Rec Center. We had a, a few people show up in person. And I think we had twenty or so um, on Zoom. Uh, we had a couple of little technical hybrid issues. Most of us ended up on our cell phones and the um, and doing the meeting that way. Um, so maybe next time we'll just probably do a hundred percent virtual, a hundred percent in line, uh, online. But uh, we had a great conversation. Um, Jeff Hurt uh, came and did an awesome uh, presentation about the um, planning process, our neighborhood planning process. Um, our group from sustainable uh, neighborhoods in, in um, Chelsea and, and a few other people. Uh, talked a lot about what they're rolling out in Applewood as far as uh, the initial uh, parts of that program go. And we heard, uh, I think pretty loud and clear, um, that the residents of Applewood would, would really like to see sidewalks, um, specifically on Thirty-Eighth. Um, going from Youngfield to Kipling. So, um, that was a pretty loud and clear theme, I think, Ms. Weaver and I heard. So, that's something we will be looking at here in the near future. So, thank you, everybody. Oh, by the way, if you can find it, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Council Member Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just want to echo a lot of uh, Mr. Stites' comments. We had a, and we had a great meeting. It was really great to see everyone. And I also want to thank the other city staff that helped us get it going and and, and both at the Rec Center and, and at the city. So, thank you for that. Um, I did have a quick question. Uh, regarding the speaker at the beginning of our meeting. And I was just curious, I, I did not uh, see an email. And I was just curious if either Mr. Goff or Mr. Johnstone could um, could elaborate on, on uh, if an, if an email was received or, or just a little bit more information on, on that uh, that.
Yeah, I, not aware of an email either, um, Ms. Weaver. And, and um, Ken, Ken um, uh, knows the issue, I believe. Um, but I don't, I'll let him speak for himself.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I too, um, have not received any uh, direct communication from Mister, I think, Bondershock is the last name. Um, apologies if I'm getting that wrong. Um, but yeah, he, he, he's a homeowner who had uh, some windows replaced and went through the permitting process. I don't have all the specifics, but um, I, I know that our chief building official has, has reached out to him. There was a, a disconnect on one of the uh, inspection requests that he had. Uh, just a little bit more background, I guess. We, we certainly are, are continuing to do time windows uh, for inspections, so we do either uh, at the, the permit holder's um, preference, we either do an A M. Or a P M. Or a two-hour window. So, we've, we've not um, stopped doing that during the pandemic. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure what that um, you know, miscommunication was. But again, I know our, our chief building official has followed up with him and, and tried to uh, answer all of those questions. Um, in terms of the actual inspection protocols, uh, for something like a window replacement. Uh, during the pandemic, we are not uh, conducting in-person inspections for owner-occupied homes. Uh, you know, out of the public health concerns for our inspection staff. So, uh, we will do whatever we can to create a virtual inspection uh, through uh, you know, through photos, through video, through whatever they can provide for us. Um, if there remain uh, ongoing issues uh, that the homeowner wants to ensure the, the quality of the work. Uh, we can certainly uh, coordinate that, you know, post-pandemic in terms of uh, conducting an in-person inspection. But that's been our protocol uh, during the pandemic is that we're not doing uh, in-person inspections for owner-occupied homes. Uh, we do in-person inspections for any project that requires an in-person inspection to continue moving forward. So, if it's a, if it's a new construction or an addition, where the, uh, the need for an in-person inspection is required in order to keep the project moving forward, we do those. Uh, but for projects like window replacements that the inspection could be deferred to post-pandemic. Uh, that those are being, uh, we're, we're making every effort to do them virtually, but if that can't be accomplished, then uh, they'll have to be closed out uh, at a later date in time.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you have anything further?
I didn't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Council Member Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I've got a couple of, I, I feel like uh, uh, Elected Officials Matters may be longer than the rest of the meeting tonight. Um, so uh, the first thing is I want to mention again and invite everybody, I'm hosting my annual District Two meetings. They're upcoming. Um, unlike the ambitious counselors in District Three, I am actually hosting one in-person and a second one uh, that is just virtual. The in-person meeting is this Saturday, the thirteenth of February at the Rec Center. From one to two thirty. Um, I am asking people to R S V P. For that because it's limited attendance to twenty people. And I do have a handful of R S V Ps already. So, uh, you can R S V P. To me. Um, the second meeting will be on the sixteenth, which is Tuesday night. From uh, six thirty to eight o'clock. And that is via Zoom. And you can find that link on the city's website or email me and I'd be happy to send it to you. Um, and I'm gonna be covering the same content in both meetings. Um, going over sort of this uh, incredible year we're putting behind us and the incredible year that we have ahead of us. I have my annual uh, Good Neighbor Awards. And then, of course, I'll be taking questions and answers from neighbors. Um, the second thing I want to mention is, um, over the last month, Council Member Nosler Beck and I have been working with the city staff to apply for a very competitive um, award called the All-America City Award. Each year, uh, ten cities are recognized nationally for having the civic infrastructure um, to really stand out. And um, not, Ms. Nosler Beck and I took it to city staff at the end of December. And it's a pretty ambitious application process. And uh, thanks to um, to Ms. Schilling and Ms. Shaq and um, our Sustainability Coordinator and twenty-one community members. We are uh, on Wednesday gonna be submitting our application. And the theme this year is equity and resilience. And the process of working on this application was just an incredible affirmation of just what a great place Wheat Ridge is and that we have challenges and that we have really uh, unique ways of stepping up to them. And so, um, I'm really proud of, of the application. Our team was just incredible. If we're finalists, we're gonna have to put on a skit. So, uh, if, if, uh, if we get that far, uh, I'm sure we'll have a great time putting a skit together for that. Um, but I just want to share a sentence that's, that's in one of the, the many essays that we had to write. Um, Wheat Ridge residents, been business owners and civic leaders are committed to honoring the legacy of a quirky small town. As together they strive to increase the quality of life for everyone in a way that is sustainable for years to come. And um, I just can't think of a better way of capturing uh, what makes me really proud to be on council and uh, makes me really happy to look here every day. So, thank you, everyone. And we'll uh, keep our fingers crossed that we make finalists on that. Uh, and then the last thing is a question. Um, so I, I believe everyone here is aware that the county went down to level yellow. Um, and uh, so I, as much as I enjoy uh, my yoga pants on Zoom. Uh, I am wondering if uh, at what point we consider uh, returning to chambers. Um, and if that's a discussion that we need to have at some point.
Who wants to jump into that one? I can tell you, Ms. Hulteen, we, we, we're starting to discuss this um, internally, staff. Um, we, we still meet weekly um, with our COVID response team to talk about um, uh, municipal facilities and, and when and if we should um, start coming back um, more. So, um, but yeah, I, I would like to personally hear from council on what you think. Um, you know, we, we can make it, we can make it work. There's still there's still some restrictions at yellow. Um, and we would still have to wear, um, we'd still have to wear masks in, 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 um, if we met in person, but um, you know, I think Allison and her team have, have worked very hard to, to make it work. So, if we do want to meet in person and, and we could still um, have a, a virtual portion too for, for residents. Um, but yeah, I'd like to hear from council. We could talk about it at the retreat too, if that's something you want to.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that. And I'm not necessarily saying we rush to it. Um, but uh, you know, I, I believe being in the room together, there's, there's value to that. So, um, I'd like us just to be aware that um, the indicators are, are indicating that, that, you know, we're getting closer to being able to do that. So, I'd like to make time at the retreat for us to discuss. And that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Very much. Um, Council Member Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow up on Council Member Hulteen's uh, inquiry relating to being in person. Uh, I think that uh, as we go forward, as we're setting the, the public hearings for various matters. When we talk about the word virtual, in my view of the word virtual, that could be both in-person and virtual. Or a hybrid of both, that it doesn't necessarily preclude us from being in chambers. Uh, so long as some portion of it is broadcast via Zoom or some other way. And I don't know if the city attorney has any thoughts on that as far as as we're calling these a, a virtual meeting, uh, that, that could also take place in person, could it not?
Yes, it certainly could. And as we move toward actually having council members present, I agree that uh, for the foreseeable future, there'll be a lot more people want to attend virtually. So, we'll want to continue to have that capability. When we start meeting also in person. Let me think a little bit about how we might articulate the, the fact that that person's can attend virtually or person per the notice or something. And we'll start thinking about how to message that. And we'll start thinking about how to message that. But I agree with Councilmember Urban that, that to the extent any portion of the hearing remains virtual, then saying it's a virtual hearing covers it.
And so kind of looking at the calendar, I would ask us that, that we look at the March 8th council meeting to be both in-person and virtual, depending on each council member's desire to, to be virtual or in-person or some way to kind of get us back into that. And I don't necessarily want to rip the bandaid off, but I would like us to do what we can to get this moving forward. What is everybody's thoughts on that?
We have a comment first from Ms. Weaver and then Ms. Hoppe.
I'm, I'm honestly very hesitant, simply because until there is more vaccines readily available, I spend a lot of time with my elderly mother, and, and I'm, I'm just not willing to, to risk her, her health until. And, and obviously, I'd like to get vaccinated as well. So I think, I think that conversation also has to happen with the availability of, of vaccines for us to, to, to be gotten as well. Thanks.
Ms. Hoppe.
Well, in, in my opinion, as council is meeting, I think that it's important we are either all virtual or all on the dais. But I would like to say we just barely moved into yellow, like by days. And we were in orange and then went to red and then back to orange. And so I think that this conversation, we should have a, maybe a deeper conversation at the retreat about it. But I think that it's a tad bit premature considering we've only been here for a few days.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm absolutely not for it at all. We do not even know what this virus is, how it's mutating. And we have to wear masks, we have to social distance. And with so many people around, it's like I am concerned about the air. We don't even know what it is. So I don't want to be like Tampa, Florida or something, you know? So I don't know what the rush is. So we don't, we don't have that many people vaccinated yet, and this virus is still mutating. So that's just my position. Thank you.
And is the retreat in-person or is it virtual?
We decided in-person with, with social distancing practices in place and masks.
Okay. So we can meet in-person for that.
Ms. Hoppe.
Well, when we are sitting on the dais, the arms of our chairs are actually touching each other. So not at our own tables in a giant room. So I, I guess I would suppose that's a very major difference.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And at the retreat, I'm looking forward to sitting by a door so I could have it open a little. Thank you.
Anything further? Oh, Ms. Weaver.
I would like to table this conversation. It, it just, Mr. Urban, with all due respect, that, that felt very aggressive, that statement. And I think we all have different feelings around what's okay and what's not.
And I, I appreciate your, your opinion on that. I did not make it, didn't want to make it aggressive. But at the same time, I was trying to broach a difficult subject and trying to understand where we are with this. And it's going to maybe sound abrasive, and I apologize if that sounded abrasive. I'm just trying to deal with a very difficult subject that we all have different opinions on. And I'm, you know, like everybody else here, do not want to get sick. But I also want to do what we can to, to bring this in-person at some point in the future. And it's going to have to be a continued conversation. And I apologize if that seems aggressive.
Would it, would be possible, Mr. Goff, to, to talk about this during our retreat?
We can. You know, we have a limited amount of time to, to talk about strategic priorities for the next couple of years. So I'd hate for this to be, you know, a, a long discussion. And you spend your half of your annual retreat on, on this one topic. You know, I think we could have a, a short conversation if everybody wants to think about it. Or we, we, we have, we schedule it at the next, maybe a next study session. We have a discussion about it.
Okay. Mr. Urban, anything further tonight?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I think tonight we had a great meeting and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo the council members' thanks to our surrounding community for not only applying for our boards and commissions, but also for our Race and Equity Task Force. And, and for all those that are already serving on, on our boards and commissions and task force. And, you know, we have a lot of mighty power in our community. And there's a, a lot of people, we have a lot of skills that people bring and offer in, in their volunteer service for our community. So thank you very much for that. Also wanted to say Happy Valentine's Day. And I also wanted to say that I love Weaver.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're just about done with our meeting tonight. I would like to say, let's see, on my, on my list, we have Coffee with the Mayor this Saturday morning at 9 o'clock. The dial-in on the instructions are on our web. We'd be happy to have you join us. I would like to express my condolences to the Servini family. Carl was a, was really a great, a great supporter and promoter of Wheat Ridge. And, and he was a great, a great guy and a great friend to be around. So I'm going to miss him very much. And our condolences go out there. Valentine's Day is, is the Sunday. I hope you will all take care and provide love to not only those that, that are your closest loved ones, but other ways in the community that you can show your, your love and care for the people that are around us. We are, we are making progress in the, in the fight against COVID-19. I hope everyone will take, take it to heart. Let's, let's sort of double down on the safety, the personal safety, and, and making all of our community safe. And I'm, I know that everyone has gotten a message on how to do that. So I'd like to thank you all for joining us. Thank you to all of our speakers who came and spoke before the council. We appreciate your inputs into our meeting. If there is no more business to come before the council, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. We will see you, not next week, because we have a, a, a week off for President's Day, I believe. And we will see you the following week. So thank you all very much. Good night. Happy Valentine's Day.